Good evening. This is Jack Spillane from the New Bedford Light and welcome to the New Bedford Lights latest version of the chat. We have a special chat tonight involving all seven of the Ward Three candidates in the special election in Ward Three. So, welcome to you all and I'll give you some short introductions. We're going to have an informal discussion here. There's no timing like a formal debate. I'm going to ask people not to interrupt each other and to try to limit their answers to about two minutes because we have a lot of questions and want to give everybody a chance. I've moderated a few of these things and I'm pretty good at herding cats, so to speak, so I think we'll be okay. So I'm going to introduce you in no particular order. And we'll go. First, we have Kathy Dana, a former Ward Three counselor and a real estate businesswoman in the city known for developing a few properties downtown. We also have with us tonight Sean Oliver, who works as a corrections officer at the state facility in Walpole. He's also a constable in the city of New Bedford. We have Bob Cabral, whom some of you may know from Ashway, Hawthorne Chimney, Chimney Suite Business in in Dartmouth and the surrounding towns for a lot of years. He was also a manager at CBS and has worked in substance abuse counseling. We have John Robinson, who ran his own music business for many years, all the way from Rhode Island to the Cape and many Catholic schools and private schools. And we have Bob Bromley, a financial analyst for the Rhode Island State Senate and known to many of you as one of the leaders of the Veterans Museum down at Fort Taba for many years. We have Jacob Ventura, a former aide to State Rep. Steve Howard, a lawyer with Wobbs and Gray in Boston and an activist for many years. And Common Immeral, a academic coordinator for the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical School, a longtime teacher before that and also active volunteering with Save Our Schools Group. Welcome to you all.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hey, guys.
All right. So we'll get right into it. I'm not one for opening statements or anything like that. I would say I'll probably call on people, but if I don't call on you and if you want to join in, just speak up as long as nobody else is talking and we'll see how that goes. So the biggest issue in the campaign is I've talked to you all and walked around your neighborhoods. It's clear to me is constituent services. Everybody is talking about constituent services and how important it is to people. And many of you have told me that the residents that you speak to are unhappy. So why don't you tell me why they're unhappy? And we'll start with Sean Oliver.
Hey, guys. Thanks, Jack. People are unhappy for a main reason being they have been unheard for quite some time. You know, when you want something done or if there is an issue, you like to voice that issue, but the biggest thing is the correspondence after the fact. A lot of people that I've spoken to say that they have reached out on many occasions and sometimes they would hear back, sometimes they wouldn't, but most of the time that was the case is that they wouldn't hear back. The biggest thing is follow through and corresponding between.
Have you frozen up, Sean? I'm going to go to Bob Cabral while Sean is frozen for a little bit. We'll go back to Sean. Sean, it looks like you froze for a little bit. Did you have a few more things you want to say?
Yeah, I have my back.
Yep.
Okay, so the biggest thing is consistency. Consistency is key in almost everything that we do. So I think if we bring a sense of urgency when a constituent reaches out to us and we're consistent in our follow through and getting back to them, building, rebuilding that relationship that they had with City Hall. You're, we're mediators to some extent and they want to feel like they have a person on the inside. You know, we all have a plumber to call when we have an issue. We all have a mechanic to call when we have an
Okay, he's frozen again, so I'm going to go to Bob Cabral. Bob, what are you hearing about constituent services?
Well, it's the same thing. I mean, the prior city council never returned phone calls. That's the number one thing I'm hearing. And that is important. You know, when a person has a problem, it's very important to them. It might not seem like a big deal to other people, but to them it means a lot. So for you to respond, first of all, and acknowledge that they have a problem that needs to be addressed, it goes a long way. They'd like to be treated like people, you know, they don't, they have something that's very concerning and they need that follow up. You know, at the end of the day, before I go home, I'm going to make sure that I return all my phone calls. You know, it's easy to say I'll do it tomorrow. I'll do it tomorrow. I'll do it tomorrow. But tomorrow sometimes never comes, so they will get a call that night.
Okay. John Robinson, what are you hearing about how the residents feel about their, about the services they're getting from their ward counselors?
They say the same thing I said. The reason I decided to run for Ward Three counselor was because so many times people came to my door asking me to sign their papers or to vote for them. They asked me problems. I told them the problems and concerns I had and I never heard from them again. Constituent Services is the cornerstone of my prop, of my campaign. That's why, and I, and I'm the only candidate that did this. I want to establish one, a webpage for Ward Three. This will be my own webpage. I will put up for Ward Three. There will be a problem report page where anytime a constituent has any problem or concern, they could just fill it out. It will be automatically emailed to me and I will get right back to it at night. The second on the page will be, there will be a city council agenda page. Every city council meeting, I will report on what transpired at that meeting for the residents. So that will keep them up to, up to date on what's at City of New Bedford's agenda. We can all work together. Their input with us.
I'm just going to cut you there. I want to make sure everybody gets a chance.
Absolutely, Jack.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Common Immeral next. What are you hearing common from the constituents you talk to about the services they're getting? Are they, are they happy? Are they frustrated?
I think across the board, it sounds like we're all hearing the same things as that folks are frustrated and they want, they want to know who to contact, how to get the problem resolved, and then they want follow up. Just like we track our packages when we order something, we, we, sometimes we can see it in real time. People want to know what the status of their complaint is. So in terms of constituents being able to reach out to me via phone, email, and this has been recorded. This has been resolved. This is the follow up communication. I want them to get back to me and let me know whether or not it has been, whether or not it's been resolved. And the city services app, I also want to take the opportunity to educate people on that. Not everybody has access to smart devices, but those who do, it'll show you dropping pins in a certain radius where you are, how many similar concerns have been reported. It tells you if it's been resolved or not resolved. So having people know that they can track their services, I'm here to help them and also show them the tools because it really is responsiveness. I think that's what we've all been hearing.
Okay. Just to be fair, I want to make a comment. John Robinson had said that he thought he was the only person that said he would have a webpage and you may be, but other people have brought up the need to me in my conversations with them to have some sort of form of better communications. Let's go to Bob Bromley. What are you hearing from the residents there about constituent services?
The exact same thing. There's been no response from the previous counselor. You know, we've gone five years of almost a desert of information going to and from City Hall. Constituents are complaining about everything from trash to trees to the streetlights and it just fell on deaf ears. In addition, the, we need to be more proactive. So we, instead of waiting for the constituents to contact us about a dead tree or tree limbs that are hanging or traffic lights, we need to get out to the residents of Ward Three with that information, you know, take a look, go around, see where a tree could be a problem, contact the city DPI and get them out there as soon as possible to take care of it before it becomes a problem. In addition, when we have different developments or any other plans that are occurring in Ward Three, we don't hear about it. Well, we will get a little snippet here and there from the news and then it disappears for a long time and we're all left wondering what exactly is happening. So being a two, two ways of communication. One, getting communication out to the residents of Ward Three as well as listening to their concerns and their complaints and following through and getting the problem solved. That has been the prime issue that the residents of Ward Three have told me.
Okay, let's go to Jacob Ventura. In your travels, Jacob, what are you hearing from residents of constituent services? Are they happy with the, the way they've been working? Do they need more? What's going on?
Well, for, for example, I was on a phone call two nights ago with a gentleman in Ward Three who lives on Durfee Street and he had a, a street light out. It's been out for almost four years, he says, and and it's creating a hazard for pedestrians on the sidewalk. It's a hazard for drivers. And the biggest issue though is that the city has not resolved it. I don't know what the, the background is there, but I did assure him and I drove by it and I saw it. And so the, it's these little issues that sometimes are the most important to people and whoever the next counselor is, has a a great opportunity to make even incremental changes, which has a huge impact on people's lives. I'm the first candidate to come out with a detailed plan. I'm one of the only candidates who actually has a success record of constituent services. I don't just talk about it. My time in the state house has afforded me an opportunity to help. We represented 4,000 people, which is slightly bigger than Ward Three, and we helped veterans obtain ramps to their front doors, disabled veterans, emergency housing for veterans, home heating assistance for senior citizens. We've helped countless people navigate, in this case, mass health and unemployment, which was state level. I will take those experiences and bring them to the city level. And I think part of it is leveraging relationships. You know, at the state level, you have to have relationships within the executive branch and it's the same thing with leveraging those relationships at the city level as well. In terms of what I do, I was the first candidate to call for, call for office hours. On a weekly basis, I commit to the people that I'll have office hours in the district and also by appointment. My phone line will be available 24/7. Hopefully people don't call me at night, but it will be available 24/7 as well. So.
Very, very good. Just one slight correction. Ward Three is about 20,000 people, so about half the size of the state districts. Finally, we'll go to Kathy Dana, who is the one person who's been a city counselor and knows what it's like to get those phone calls. Kathy, what are your thoughts on constituent services? How can, how can they be better in Ward Three?
Well, we're all going to say pretty much the same thing. It's very frustrating for residents. It could be something as minor as a pothole, but that person drives over, if it's in front of their house, they drive over every single day. In order to get certain things done in the city, you have to have a good communication with all the departments. At the time that I was a counselor, Ron LaBelle was DPI and you create a relationship with each department so that you can get these things done. It's not something you can do on your own. We have to rely on the services that are provided for the city, but you have to have friendships yet. And it's not a favor thing. You have, it's, it's just a good rapport with people in the city and you know who to go to and you know how to get things done and I've done it.
Yeah. Do you think you did a good job with it last time?
I did towards the end of my career and someone may bring that up. There was a slight issue. We all know. I hate to put my personal things out there. I was getting divorced. So I did lack on the constituent services I did. And that did allow Henry to come in and win the race. And I don't blame them. I don't fault a single resident that felt. And I can't say it's not that I wasn't available. I wasn't as available as I should have been. I'm now retired. My entire focus is on city council. It'll be a 24 hour, not 24 hour job. Anyone that says that it's impossible. I don't want to work.
Okay. I'm going to stay on constituent services a while longer, but I have a different wrinkle. And that is sometimes constituent services are felt by some to bleed over into favor doing. And then, you know, there, there was a relationship between the department heads, whether it's someone that can fix a streetlight or someone that can cut a cat out of a tree. And this, this, this seems to be, there were some counselors a few weeks ago who got bigger raises, some department heads that got bigger raises than other people. Counselors gave their rationale that the reason that they got the bigger raises was because they had more responsibilities. The mayor had debates about that. Anyway, it passed, but how do you control that these department heads that are doing favors for counselors on things like streetlights? It doesn't get to be, I reward that city department head. I know that Mayor Lang for a while didn't want the counselors going, they wanted, he wanted them to go through his office. He's the administrator, not the counselors. So how, how do you balance that conflict of interest with department heads? Let's go first to Sean Oliver. Sean, how's your phone working? I know you have a little Can you guys hear me?
I can. Very good.
Okay, great. So we're good now. So, well, the biggest thing is at the end of the day, it's not favors. It's their job, you know, to get these things done. And I think if you set the precedent right away that we are building a partnership to better the neighborhoods that we all live in and get people to buy into that as far as, hey, this guy's a, this person is a, is a leader and he's really worried about the, the issues, the day to day issues that arise in the city. And when something comes up, it's, it is an urgent matter for the most part because as I believe Kathy said, those people, it's affecting them on a day to day basis. It may not affect you and I because maybe we don't use that particular road or maybe we don't go down that particular street or whatever the case may be. But it, that's a pain point for somebody else and you need to establish the sense of urgency between the departments that we need to get this done. It's not about favor doing, it's about just doing your job.
How'd you feel about those pay raises, Sean?
I think I actually know one of the individuals on a personal level through being a friend of the family. Personally, it wasn't something that was really expected for, so they say. Whether that's true or not, I'm not sure, but I find that to be, you know, I find it to be a little ludicrous, to be honest with you. I've worked the jobs that I've made less than $50,000, never mind a, a single raise of $50,000. And I think the majority of people in the city have felt that way. It is an issue that has come up as I go to door to door. And it, it, the people feel that it is ludicrous. Like I said, that most people work for less money than that.
Okay, let's go to John Robinson next. John, how do you balance that getting what needs to be done? You know, as, as you told me, you asked me a people person, but how do you balance that without the counselors then giving a big raise to do a favor for the department head that's helping them?
Oh, number one, I want to say I absolutely, I've looked at it. I am against these pay raises that went through for the counselors. I think they just went too far on some of the people. I think we need to review it. I think we need to go over it. The two ways, when problems are going to be done, and I think you're, I hope I'm answering the question. I'm trying to get the exact question you asked, Jack. It, you know, the mayor's office, as when Mayor Lang had it, everything went through Mayor Lang and he took care of it. That's one way. The problem with that is not everyone, all the department heads get along with the mayor. So.
It can be a bottleneck too.
Absolutely. The first thing I would do is if, when I become counselor, I will go to meet and try to and establish a relationship with each department head. Go to talk to them, tell them I'm the new city counselor. We all want to work together for the city and have a relationship with them. And then we can go from there to solve the problems, hopefully. If there is a bottleneck or if something does happen, then I would go to the mayor's office because he is the executive, the ex-official, he's in charge of everything. So I would say he would, he would be the one to take care of it if there was a personality problem or something where somebody wasn't doing something because they didn't get along with somebody, they didn't speak to anybody else or anything like that. That's what I say. Thank you, Jack, too, for having this and for all the candidates for being here tonight.
I would second that. Let's go to Common next. Common, how do you balance that, the need to fix someone's streetlight, to fix a sidewalk and, you know, then you go and decide about that department heads, should they be reclassified to a, a bigger raise than somebody else? How do you balance those two things?
So it's about accountability, right? So we want to make sure that everyone is fulfilling their roles to the best of their ability and that everyone is receiving the services they're required. That's your job. In terms of when you're talking about salaries and I, I'm curious as to how these folks ended up with 40 to 50% above the median income and those conversations. But I know that I would absolutely be committed to asking questions and to the process and making amendments and understanding until we did what was right by the people of the community. So it's accountability and when you're assessing somebody's performance, there's standards by, against which you do that. It's not, you can't balloon somebody's salary because they're your friend. And I'm not saying that's what happened here, but I know that that's what some folks are saying. It's, you want to hold people accountable. They're doing the job that they need to do and it's not about favors. It is about building relationships, but those are two different things.
Right. Let's, let's go to Jacob next. Jacob, how do you balance that? You know, you need to get that streetlight fixed. You need to get that sidewalk fixed, but you know, really is that the mayor's job to have the priorities for what streetlight goes next and and is it really the counselor's job? And, and what about those pay raises? Some people jump four and five grades at a time. To be fair, the counselor said that they felt that those particular people had more responsibilities. The human resources director said she didn't really think they did. How do you balance those things?
Yeah, well, first part of the question regarding constituent services, and I think Mr. Oliver mentioned to it, people need to be doing their job. So if you're a department head or if you're the mayor, you need to be doing your job. And I think whoever represents, whoever wins this election represents Ward Three. Part of their job is going to be an advocate for their neighborhoods in that ward. I've done it at the state house with state agencies. Again, you have to develop relationships, but in terms of a conflict, the department heads are not my friends. I don't socialize with these folks. So for me, there's absolutely zero conflict. I'm the only candidate who's not taking the pay or the, the health insurance if elected. So I'm doing this solely to serve and to hold people in government accountable. As far as the pay, the pay raises, you know, I, I'm not often complimentary towards you, Jack, but I think you and Arthur at New Bedford Light did a phenomenal job bringing this to light, this issue back in December. It's outrageous that 10 counselors voted unanimously with very little debate on these increases and quite frankly, I would have been the sole vote against it. It's fiscally reckless, in my opinion. I think the 10 counselors deserve to tell the people why they did this, what metrics they used, what analysis. I tend to agree with the, the human, human resources expert on this particular matter. And again, as you reported, this is not only going to cost the city 750,000 annually, it's going to be an increased pension cost down the road at a time when people are on fixed incomes. Property taxes are high and people are feeling the pinch. It's fiscally irresponsible and I think the 10 counselors deserve, the people deserve answers from the 10 incumbents.
Just one small thing. I think Counselor Linda Morad and Naomi Carney did give reasons for, it was the other counselors who did not give reasons.
Not adequate reasons, in my opinion.
All right, let's go to Kathy Dana next. Kathy, what do you think about those raises and how do you balance the need to get something done for the constituents without having to reward the department heads later on?
Well, first I want to clarify, I wasn't talking about friendships. I don't have a friendship with any of the department heads. It's about respect. We're all human. And to get things done with a ward, you know, in this ward, to get things done in any, after anything in life, you have to have respect for the person that is going to help you get something done. So if you go in there like a bulldog and, and demand and you know, I'm not saying anyone is going to do it. I have so much respect for people and in return I gain respect. And that's, that is a way of getting things done. As far as the pay raises, I have no doubt whatsoever that the city council is going to readdress that. I think a mistake was made and I think they, they're going to be held accountable and they will correct anything that was done wrong. Should they get raises out of favors? Absolutely not. No, there shouldn't be any favors in the city whatsoever. As I said, I get things done because I respect people and I get respect back in return. And therefore I can get things done.
Yeah, they, by the way, the counselors are not saying that they did it for favors. They're saying that they did it because the person had a lot of responsibilities. That, that point is debatable. Bob Bromley, what's your thoughts about the pay raises and the relationship of the counselors to the department heads?
Well, everything I've done in my professional life, you have to act and deal with everybody in a professional manner. So you develop the, the relationships over time, not out of friendships and political favors or other types of favoritism, but just regular professionalism and respect dealing with each other, understanding the role of everybody. The council, counselor who will be coming into Ward Three has to understand that the department heads do answer directly to the chief executive of the city, which is the mayor. But they do have to come in and answer to the city councils when it comes time for pay raises, budgets or any other issues that are coming before the department. When it comes to the pay raises, you, you have to, as a council, look at what is the human resource officer recommending? What are the mechanisms and the matrices that we use to determine these? And then question and quiz each part of it as to why that such a raise should be given. This is something that I do every year as part of my job with the, with the state of Rhode Island. Directors come in for different projects or even pay raises for their, for themselves or for their agencies. And you have to quiz and go through. Show me why. If it does not make sense and if it does not seem logical, you don't agree with it. And that's the situation that you have here currently is that you don't have the information as to, this is not logical. How can you in a city like this give out such a huge pay raise and not have any type of matrix that you're showing people to back it up? When you take, take a look at something like that, you then also have to compare to the surrounding area, maybe the surrounding towns. But I don't think that in the surrounding towns, we have department directors that are making $40,000 or $50,000 more than a director that we have here in the city in New Bedford. So we have to be careful when you're doing something like that and not just shoot from the hip and say, yeah, let's do it. You've got to go through and examine it and make sure that, you know, it make, it's perfectly logical to do. In this particular case, I haven't seen that logic. I haven't seen the matrices. And without seeing any of that, I would not agree to such large pay increases for any of the Unit C personnel.
Okay, very good. And we'll wrap up with Bob Cabral. Bob, how do you balance that relationship with getting something done for the constituent with, you know, evaluating the department head who helped you get done?
Everybody says it's relationships and it is. It's relationships, relationships, relationships. So you have to form a good working relationship with the people that you deal with in city. But also it's follow through. You know, you can't just put it in your lap and forget about it. You have to follow through. And something Common said, I mean, I will be a bulldog if I have to. I have no problems with that at all. And I'm going to do it in professional manner, but you know, I, they're going to get so many phone calls from me if they're not reacting. And then as Plan B, I would go to the mayor. As far as, it's also another consideration is safety and priorities. These department heads have to prioritize, prioritize what needs to get done. So communicating that to the constituents is very bad. As far as the raises go, I mean, Jacob and I were the only two that stood up right away loud and we made our, our feelings known. And nobody else did, not even members in the city council until you guys took it out for him and made him answer the question. And that's going to cost us millions and millions of dollars in the long run when you add the pensions and $150,000 a year. It's it's unnecessary and it's, it's egregious. There's no other way to say it. It's something that should not have been done. And I totally would have been a lone no vote and I would have been screaming probably.
Okay, so because you have all talked to me so much about constituent services, I'm going to ask one more question, then we'll move on to something else. And this one, you can answer me briefly if you will. How do you say no to someone? How do you say no, I can't get that, you know, I know you want a street light or a stop sign at that curb, but I've got to say no to you because the traffic commissioner is telling me it's unsafe or, or there's a hill that will make it. You know, we had the example of the hill on Hathaway Road that makes it unsafe. So how do you say no to someone? I can't do it. Let's start with you, John Robinson.
Well, you say no by saying no. You know, what you do is you look at the law or why it can't go. It's pretty much black and white. You either can do it or you can't. We have to balance when we're a counselor, we're, we're helping the constituents, but the constituents are our friends, which we give favoritism to. We have to be fair with everything. And if it's, if it doesn't work out with the law or what I would do is I would go to them and I would show them, I would say, this is the way it is. We just can't do it. It's plain black and white. Either we can or we can't. If we could do it and if it was good for the city and if it was something that would need to be done, I would fight. If we could do it and if it was good for the city and if it was something that would need to be done, I would fight to it and now we go to it. But if the law says we can't do it, then we can't do it.
Okay, how about you, Bob Bromley? How do you convey the no and how how do you convey maybe yes, but it's going to take a long time? How how do you convey an unsatisfactory answer to a constituent?
Well, basically the same thing, if it's, you know, whatever the constituent request is, you have to research it out. And if it's something that is a traffic study or something that cannot physically be done because of either a ordinance or a state law or federal law, you have to then get back to the constituent, not only just say no, but then lay it out and explain to the constituent why that particular issue cannot be resolved to their satisfaction. It's just clear, getting back to them professionally and courteously and, you know, making sure that you answer their question as best as you can.
Let's go to Kathy next. You've had you've had to do this, how do you say no or it's going to take a long time? What what are your answers? What did you do last time?
Develop forms around communication and gathering as much information as you can. And then not you can't just say no, you have to explain to them why it's no. You have to show them the reasons for it. Always understand their point because it if it matters to them, it matters. Irrelevant of whether it's something can be done or can't be done. So you show them all the reasons why you were told, because we're not the ones that say no, we're told no. And it's with information, you show them the clear cut information of this is exactly why it can't be done or at least at this time it can't be done. I can readdress it at another time, I can look further into it to see if there's something else that could alleviate some of the problem, whatever it may be. And you just do the best that you can in explaining it to them.
Alrighty, Sean Oliver, how do you say no or it's going to take a long time? I don't know when it's going to happen.
I mean, everybody's kind of, there's been a sense of cohesiveness here, everybody's going to touch on it. But you make your no's no's and your yeses yeses. And 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 a lot of times there there is no gray area, it is the it is the black and white. And you explain to them, like Kathy has stated, you know, this is something that affects that person, you know, on a daily level, on a daily basis. And you just have to approach them with a little bit of humility, a little bit of compassion. I feel your, you know, pain in that with that issue. Currently, we're we're not able to do that, maybe that is something that we can readdress. Maybe we can get a couple of the neighbors together and things like that and show a little bit more, you know, urgency through the city that this is something that not only one person is worried about. There is many people that this affects. A lot of times people are like, oh, you know, this one person is calling me for this one issue, but that may be the only one person that said something. There are others in that neighborhood that feel that pain. And the the biggest thing is, I think, if we are able to rally the masses, sometimes we can get the things done that weren't able to be done before.
Carmen Amaro, you're a school administrator, you must have had to say no to some teachers from time to time. How do you deliver a a no message to a constituent that wants something to be fixed or it's going to take a long time? How how do you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I've had to say no to different stakeholders for the last twenty years. So you have to know, the person needs to know that they feel heard and they need to understand the why. You need to have a, you need to understand where they're coming from and why it can't be done in the moment. Now, that is not to say that if a group of people come together, if they have a creative solution that you didn't think of, that you're not receptive to that and and bring to the larger body. You you have to be open and receptive to those things, but if something can't be done in the moment, you have to be direct. Not everyone is happy with that answer in that moment, but folks appreciate honesty so they can start working towards alternate solutions.
Okay, I think we're wrapping up with Jacob on this one. How do you say no to someone who really wants something done? And or it's going to take a long time, it's going to cost too much money? How do you give that message?
Yeah, I think people more now than ever want government officials who are transparent and who are not going to give them the typical BS. Excuse my French. I've, you know, as I've said before, I'm one of the few people up here who's actually done it. Okay, whether it's servicing veterans, senior citizens, I go through the constituent list, I've done it. I've also dealt with times where it is impossible to solve an individual situation or it will take an extended period of time and you have to manage expectations. And as someone said, just previously, you know, being able to effectively communicate the status of that is important as well. But, you know, I plan on being a, I I don't know what the term was just that was just used, but a pit bull or a wrecking ball or whatever it is. I absolutely plan on being that at City Hall if elected and being a fierce advocate for the people of Ward three and making sure that those no's turn into maybes and turn into yeses and actually get things done. I think city government sometimes, people lose faith in their government because it's stagnant, it doesn't, it's not effective, it doesn't get the job done. My goal is to actually make sure we can get things done, of course, within the law, the statutes and the budget, of course.
All right. I'm sorry?
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob. How do you say no? You know, I I I
Nah, that's fine. The big thing is empathy. You know, you have to put yourself in these people's shoes and you have to give them a message that's positive. You know, you have to relate to them. And you need to explain to them exactly why. And I would maybe talk to some of the neighbors to see if they have the same concerns because there is power in numbers. The more people that you get that are concerned about an issue, the more it's going to be brought up front. The other thing is, you know, some of the department heads, did they just say no just to say no? So it would take a little research to see if maybe it could be done. You know, so don't, I don't always accept no as an answer.
I'm going to give you all a little bit of a hard time now because in talking to many of you, you all told me that you thought there should be an app that that you could follow things like you do on tracking a package at Amazon. And nobody brought that up in this whole discussion. So I know some of you would like to do that, so maybe I didn't ask the questions right or whatever. But let's move on to something else. The advanced manufacturing center, you know, is the portion of three holes in the golf course, they want to take it and make this high tech center, they didn't get any bids, as we know. Now they're trying to think of what should they do next? Traffic has been cited as an issue. What are your thoughts on the advanced manufacturing center? Let's start with you, Bob, since I forgot you last time, my bad.
I'm going to use my leadership and my management experience to look for missed opportunities in the upcoming campus. And for, so I'm going to look for opportunities. Perfect example is we got sixty applications that went out. Not one came back. I wonder if anybody decided to pick up the phone, call a few of these people and say, hey, what was the problem? They're ready to punt, they're ready to punt and turn it into a duck票park. I wouldn't punt, I would call a couple of these people and I would say, what held you back? I mean, I'm a businessman. I'd like to make money if if that's what that's what business does. So there is something in that project that is holding sixty people. That that's a red flag to me. There's got to be something in that project that's holding it back. I wouldn't give up on it because it's a good plan. You know, and you need some salesmanship, you need to be able to attract somebody's business. And that's that's the plan.
Sean Oliver, what do you think about the advanced manufacturing center? That's right up near your neighborhood on Upton Street.
Right up, right in, right in the thick of it, Jack. And the the already crazy and hectic traffic patterns for that area are only going to be magnetized if we don't pay attention to that as well. But in talks with people going door to door, they are kind of split, they're for it. They would like to see New Bedford go in a new direction. They they love that we're developing new areas. And then you have some people that, you know, don't really care too much. They they have the, you know, we're worried about the green space and in a city that we don't have much green space. I personally, I think that it is a plus in a a city as big of a budget as New Bedford with about a almost a half billion dollar budget, three million dollars or two point seven million dollars in tax revenue. In that scale is a drip in the bucket, if you will, but it is tax relief. But I I feel right now we're 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 working on a a plan of if you build it, they will come. There is no real vision for what is coming to that area. We're we're just saying, oh, well, we have this space, spaces like this don't really come up in a city as developed as New Bedford. So let's take and take our opportunity and and build this. I just don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot and be left with a campus that stays empty for quite some time. As Bob has said, or Rob has said, why, why did nobody come back? I I too have been in business for some years. And normally, you know, a big thing is cost. We all can agree that costs of everything has has gone up. So obviously, cost to build is going to be increased. But there is also an opportunity to to make money in instances like this where a contractor or a a developer who may not have thought they had a shot of winning a an offer on a huge development plan like that. They can shoot their shot and, you know, put a bid in. Why did no bids come back? Why didn't we follow? We know who the people are for the most part that pulled some of these applications or got some of these applications or showed some interest. Has the, how much lobbying has there been? How much back and forth has there been to 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 try to get some of these back? You know, I I feel New Bedford for a while has been
I'm going to just interrupt here. We're not proactive. I just need to keep it moving, but Carmen, how about you on the advanced manufacturing center? Is it needed for revenue or or is the traffic going to be not worth it?
Well, I think we absolutely need to bring in sources of revenue and well-paying jobs. We need to understand why folks aren't interested in coming to the area, find ways to make it more attractive. And what kind of talent pipeline do we have to provide? What kind of
I don't know what you're saying.
For different companies. You know, I also, another thing at the doors, yes, traffic is absolutely interesting. I also noticed that some folks didn't know that this was happening, though it is happening in their ward. So it's transparency in local government and communicating to our constituents what is happening so that they can weigh in. So we can have some participatory government. And just one point of correction, Jack, I did mention the app about tracking the package. So I just wanted to point that out, but.
You mentioned it tonight on your answer.
I did, yeah.
Very good, my bad. Let's go to Bob Bromley. What 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 are your thoughts on the advanced manufacturing campus and and the traffic that it might cause?
But it's kind of a twofold thing. You have development that's being proposed. You had sixty applications go out, nobody's responded. So you you know, you need to get to the New Bedford Economic Development Corporation and quiz them. What have they done since then? Why have they heard from anybody as to why they don't want to participate with a request for proposal? Is it the interest rates? Is it the construction cost? Is it something else that we have to take a look at? We need to expand our tax base in the city of New Bedford because without the expanded tax base, we cannot even think about reducing the tax rate on our homeowners as well as how that affects our tenants in Ward three. More importantly, with anything that goes on over the old golf course, is what exactly is happening? Since that was announced, nothing else has been given out to Ward three residents. We could end up with an office park, we could end up with a advanced industrial park. Could we end up with a giant warehouse there? And what is all the traffic going to do? The city is waiting right now for a developer to come in before any type of traffic study is done. City needs to be more proactive than that. Because not only do you have that that development coming in, you've got the development proposed at the bottom of one forty in Hathaway Road, the exit there for retail marijuana distribution point, as well as now you have down at the old Building nineteen continental screw site, a proposal to put in a three-story storage unit. So the city needs to be more proactive in letting the residents know what's going to happen along the entire part of Hathaway Road because it is a mess currently. And when you start combining all three or further developments along there, how is the full impact going to going to be on the traffic? In addition to everything, when we get to seeing development like the events manufacturing park, what is the city giving out as, you know, gives or give backs to the developer? Are we giving out a TIF? If we're giving out a TIF, then you know, we're not going to see a real good impact on expanding our tax base because it's going to take ten years or more to get that money back to the city. What are we doing when we have something like that coming in? As far as hiring New Bedford people, particularly people from Ward three, is it going to be opportunities for residents of Ward three to get into the construction part of these developments? As well as the long-term employment into these areas? Is it going to have an opportunity? Or are we just building something so that everybody can come down by train and take over more jobs and housing here in the area? Those are all concerns that wrap up together into that.
Okay, Jacob Ventura, what's your, what's your thoughts on the advanced manufacturing center? Is it the right thing to do for that land? Do you have confidence in the in the the traffic studies that are being done?
Like Ms. Amaral, I'm going to take just a moment to go back to that last question. On my constituent services plan, I had detailed that when elected, I would introduce in my office a a database that tracks constituent services similar to what you would see at a congressional level or a state legislative level. So when a constituent calls your office, there's accountability from point A to point Z and you can track it easily. And so and I think that holds people accountable, including elected officials. As far as the the plant, I'm supportive of the the plan as it's drafted. I've had a a conversation with the mayor about it. And I think in a situation like this, and you know, I think most of us here agree that we need to increase the tax base. I don't know if that's debated, even debated. But I do think in a situation like this, leveraging relationships, whether it's the mayor or the state legislative delegation, when it's dealing with attracting businesses to the city, specifically to this location, or whether it's dealing with the feasibility study and the traffic management of Hathaway Road. Having someone who has connections across the border in Dartmouth, I think is helpful. Having someone who has worked with our legislative delegation on NASTIOT issues. This is at the intersection of one ninety-five and one forty. I think bringing parties together and being an advocate for the area, I think that's the most important thing a ward counselor could probably do. Because there are a lot of players here. And so being an advocate for the area and making sure that whatever ends up going there is done in a responsible way for the residents and making sure that the traffic management is obviously at the top of the forefront of folks.
Okay, John Robinson, you live right up by that neighborhood, close to where the 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 plant would be, the traffic would affect you. What what are your thoughts on it? John, you must be muted. John, you're muted.
I'm mute now.
Yep, you're okay. Because you're unmuted. Well, you're unmuted for a minute, but now you're muted again.
Now, am I muted? Wait a minute, I gotta, I'll be right there, hold it one second. ALTNA. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great. Oh, fantastic. I'm nervous, no. I live right up near there and I want to see the plans, what they're going to have and how they, the exits going and coming to make sure it does not conflict with Hathaway Road, which is already congested right now. Especially Fons Corner Road and with everything that's happened there, many people use Hathaway Road instead of Fons Corner Road now to go to Dartmouth. So that's the thing. But what I really wanted to talk about was the advanced manufacturing plant. Why aren't businesses locating there? I know why. I was with somebody in the North End and talked to somebody that had a business that was thinking of going there. They're not offering any incentives. You, to make money, you've got to spend money. The tax rate in the bed fits is going to be lowered. We've got to attract businesses. We've got to have incentives, whether it's tax cuts, some kind of incentive for them to come into New Bedford. There has to be affordable housing here too, to have them to come in to support employees that are going to be working here in New Bedford. In addition to the people that are in Ward three and in the city. But I can't understand why the city of New Bedford doesn't give incentives to its business. I was in the YMCA, I was, I I go to the YMCA a lot, I work out a lot. I was talking to somebody who had left New Bedford and gone to Providence. And I asked him, he said, I called the city of Providence up, I said I was interested in coming there for a business. He got a phone call directly back from the mayor. The mayor asked him to come to the city at an address. He went there, he had a building, the mayor met him, showed him a building, you can locate here, he said, this is your building. He went there, he had a building, the mayor met him, showed him a building, you can locate here, he said, this is your building, and two years, you will not have to pay any taxes. I'm not saying we have to do anything as drastic as that, but we have to do something to attract the business, something to attract them. We have to offer incentives. If we don't offer incentives, there's never gonna be a business at the manufacturing center.
Kathy Dana, you live up near that neighborhood also. What about the advanced manufacturing center? A good idea and and uh are your neighbors worried about the traffic?
Well, it's always a good idea to add development to the city, but this is where my strength comes in. Because what I wanna find out is how are we marketing this? Because with any anything in real estate, any type of business, there has to be a marketing plan. I wanna talk to economic development. To see how, who are they reaching out to? Who are they trying to attract to the city? Um and people will say, well, no one's interested because of the interest rates. I've been in real estate thirty-two years. I watched houses go up when interest rates were at twelve fifteen percent. That's not the reason. The city has to be a little more business friendly. They have to, as John said, I don't say give incentives. We have to be more business friendly. When that casino was coming, I was down on um at the Ensta site. I was a counselor then. I went to New York City and sat with these gentlemen that were interested in it. And it, we were just a tough city to work for, to work with. Um, I built the first new building, downtown New Bedford. It was a difficult task, and I had said what they need to do is have certain forms for every single aspect of building and development in the city. You're putting up a shed, here's a piece of paper, A, B, C, D, this is what you have to do. You're gonna put up a big um development like on Hathaway Road, what is your plan? Who's going in there? Who are you, who are we even reaching? Who are we marketing this to? Cause marketing is how you attract business. You have to give them a reason to come to.
Okay, I think I've gotten anybody. Shout out now if I've forgotten anybody on the advanced manufacturing center. If not, I'm gonna go on to the other big development opportunity in this ward, and that is the Hicks Logan area, uh which is a a long-depressed part of the city, uh has a lot of issues. We have two people here tonight who live in Hicks Logan. Uh why don't we start with you, Jacob? What's your thoughts on the Hicks Logan area and how we can best develop that?
Well, um, look, I I've reviewed that plan and I've talked uh to the mayor uh about that particular plan as well. There are obviously uh quite a few variations as we've talked about. Um, uh, the issue is it's such a diverse area with fishing, uh touching the Acushnet River. Uh, there hopefully will be a fishing, a boatyard there uh for ships. Uh, you've got Kyler Seafood just in north of it, and then uh to the uh to the west, you have uh the Wamsetta Mills where I currently am, uh and then uh a few residential streets above it. And so um the challenge with that type of development, of course, is uh how do you uh mix the the potential commercial opportunities with the train that's coming in with residential and with um uh some would say light industrial, some would say heavy industrial. Uh and so that is a challenge. Um and that's uh that's something that certainly uh was brought to my attention recently, and it's something that I'm following up with with several business owners in the uh in the neighborhood. Um, and uh I look forward to speaking uh with the mayor about it as well. Uh but like the other uh the uh the Wailing City Golf Course, this is about bringing stakeholders to the table, whether they're residents, uh business owners, potential business owners, and making sure that uh a cohesive plan is is met. Uh sometimes when you have a redevelopment plan, it doesn't always necessarily turn out the way it was drafted up. And so we we need to do everything we can to increase the uh the uh the streetscapes, making sure it's pedestrian friendly, making sure we can hopefully attract more commercial business in this region um when that train comes in as well. And also obviously honoring the uh the strong fishing industry that's here in New Bedford, so.
Okay, let's go to uh Bob Cabral next. Bob, you also live in the Hicks Logan, near the Hicks Logan area. Um, some very different types of um things going on there. You have the opportunities for shipbuilding with Quinn Fisheries, but you also have a a very grimy tire recycling facility. You have substance abuse counseling going on there. Uh, the city is talking about all kinds of things like marinas and and walkways. Um, uh, all this time, nothing's happened. What are your thoughts about Hicks Logan?
Well, it's a, it's a very depressed area. I live on Beetle Street. Um, and as you walk under those bridges, my joke is it looks like you're in entering a scene from The Walking Dead. I mean, it is just depressed. Um, and then I walk down further along the waterfront and and I just start to dream and I start to see vision, I start to see all these great things. I mean, one thing that concerns me immediately is when this rail comes in next year, the passenger is gonna come off of the train, he's gonna look to the right, it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be all kinds of stuff going on, he's gonna look to the left, and it's gonna look like crap. And it's gonna be right there. The train is gonna be right there, so it's gonna be within a visual distance. So, I mean, I think this is something that should have been looked at concurrently with the train. I mean, the big thing is funding. I mean, we're lucky enough, uh the mayor announced we have a shipyard going in there. So that's at the former Copper Reserve site, I believe. Um, so and that's already working. They're already down there with cranes and, you know, knocking everything down and so so that's exciting. Um, we do need to work with the businesses. Uh, that tire guy, I mean, my idea on the tire guy, honestly, I would have given a sweet hot deal in the industrial park, set him up with, you know, so so that we can get that land back, it's some prime real estate, and we could develop it. It's a great mixed-use area. I mean, it could literally bring this the city into the next century. I mean, it it just has so much potential. But it's been ignored. It's been ignored ever since we put Route Eighteen down. I can't remember the counselor that was complaining that that was gonna happen, but whoever he was, he was a hundred percent right, you know, so that area needs attention of our city because it's a great place to talk and visit.
Yeah, we got some feedback from somebody there, so try to mute yourself if you're not talking. Uh, let's go to Sean Oliver next. Uh, you live at the other end of the ward from Hicks Logan, but you're familiar with it. Uh, a waterfront property, waterfront area, also a a low-income area. What are your thoughts about how to improve it?
Well, you, when you talk to a lot of people uh in the city, especially in the ward, um and you use the word waterfront, nobody ever thinks of that part of the city. We immediately go downtown, how, you know, how beautiful it is downtown. And um uh the biggest thing is if you want people, it it needs to be more inviting. If you want people to come there, um you walk those streets, you don't know if you're on the street, if you're on the sidewalk, if you're, you know, at at night, it's if you were to take an aerial shot of that part of the city at night, it's probably one of the darkest areas in the city. It's not very inviting. It's not very pleasant to look at unfortunately right now. And I think that the city needs to do a little bit of a a beautification of that area first before we even decide that we're gonna do something, because nobody even wants to go down there. And just because we say that we're gonna do something with mixed use, some residential, some some businesses and things like that, that's not gonna draw people down there. I I I think that for the most part, people avoid that area. They will go around, they will walk in front of the um the uh Wamsetta Mills where it's uh very well lit with the new, you know, streetlights that look like, you know, the old lantern lights and things like that because it's safer over there. It's more inviting over that way versus closer into that where the the substance abuse is and the tire guy, I think it's very dark, it's very desolate, not inviting right now. Um, and and the biggest thing is this has been a plan that's been in the works for about twelve years. And uh so no, no counselor or a candidate that is here right now is gonna bring immediate um change or development there. It is gonna be something that's gonna take a while, but it's one of those projects that have been left on the back burner for far too long, and somebody needs to continue to bring it to light because you're not gonna get anything done if it just sits there.
Yeah. Let's go to Bob Bromley. Bob, uh what about Hicks Logan? It's been, it's had a lot of potential for a long time, but not a lot of people who've wanted to develop there. The city's had a a master plan, gonna have a new plan. Uh, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the late uh council Willie Saltzman was coined it correctly over sixty years ago when he said the neighborhood was gonna be completely cut off once you put in one ninety-five and Route Eighteen. And that came very true uh to this day with the city trying to do something down there several times. This is probably what, the third, fourth, uh maybe even fifth plan that they have for that area? What's the failure? No follow-through. What part is the follow-through? Marketing. We've got to, you can come up with all the plans you want. Who are you going to market to? How are you going to market to them? What are you going to try to get in there? And then on top of everything, the businesses that are there, you have to deal with, people who live there, you're gonna have to deal with. And you wanna do it in such a way that it's respectful and not like what happened over in New London, uh Connecticut, where people were just thrown out of their homes. You then have to take a look at, okay, whatever we're doing down there, we're in environmental conditions. Because the tire uh place has been there for at least thirty years or more. What's gonna happen when you go to build? Is there soil pollution? Is there anything that could run off and go back into the Acushnet River? And we're all back to having to redredge that whole area once again? So we can have all the plans. It's great to have the plan. What is the city doing? And as a Ward Three counselor, that's where the counselor can't get in there and create the businesses, can't go out and maybe drag somebody in, can help be a uh a you know, a mediator in getting somebody from the outside coming in and talking to the city. But it also has to be the person that's the the little fly that's on the uh the back of the collar to the city planning, the city economic development, the mayor, and all the other city agencies. What are we doing? How are we planning that out? Are we going in there with a with a a uh idea of a pot uh plat- pad-ready plus on the parcels? That you get in and you have all the uh permits and everything in order as to what type of business could fit there? You, that's where the city needs to be a little bit more proactive and where the counselors who uh were in, who could go in need to get in there and make sure that such ideas are carried through. And not just, here's another lovely little plan, let's throw it off into the corner, stick it in a drawer, and then we'll look at it again six years, seven years from now, pay a consultant to come in and redesign pretty much the same thing, but a little bit different.
Okay. Carmen Amaral, you're an organizational person. You 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 work with organizing tax for a for a big, for a school system. Um, what what is the problem, do you think, with with Hicks Logan? They've had a number of plans. Um, it's a a a tough development challenge. What what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I think with any system and bureaucracies, it's accountability and follow-through, this seems to be a a theme in everything that we're saying. Uh, sure, there have been plans. Have there been voices consistently bringing those to the forefront? Where are we on this? Who who completed that action item? Who got in touch with different offices and different city organizations to ensure that we're making progress and continuously communicating that to the constituents? Because their voices are critical and there is power in numbers. That is, we have an incredible opportunity over there that is Ward Three's piece of waterfront. Um, I grew up not too far down North Front Street. I used to walk over there. I can't imagine doing that at night now, but there is a possibility of that. And this city has a a housing crisis. We we really need to explore adding housing there and including affordable housing units. We need to address the problems that are in front of us while making progress for the city.
Ah, I was wondering when somebody was gonna bring up the uh affordable housing pri- crisis side. John Robinson, um, what are your thoughts on Hicks Logan? You can unmute yourself, John.
I'm mute. No, I.
Yep, very good. Well, now you're off and you're in.
Am I all saying now?
Yep.
Okay, great. You know, I was, the um Hicks Logan thing has been a big thing on my mind. I was thinking about it the past few days. I called Mike McCarthy at City Hall. He's directing the planning. That's what they do, planning and building things. I asked him, I said, is there any funding for this? There's not one penny. Number two, the state of Massachusetts has a two billion dollar surplus. It's mo- most of it from the American Rescue Aid, which was given to us from the pandemic. We have two billion dollars sitting in our coffers right now. What could help the Hicks Logan clean up? Money. We have a new governor that's coming in now, Maura Healey. I think it's a tremendous opportunity to get her to give us some funding to clean that up. I point-blankly asked Mike McCarthy, can this be done without any money? He pretty much said, money would help tremendously. Money would help tremendously. Without any funding and without any help, this isn't gonna get done. On the other, I was also reading about Hicks Logan. I I try to stay up to the date on these things. And I'm reading a webpage and all these things which we're talking about right now. And then I looked at the date, two thousand and two, twenty years ago, the same thing. It it's got to end. We've got that, we should, I think we should get Governor Healey, she's just getting in there now, give us some funding or federal funding to the, so I grew up in Hathaway Road. I don't know if anyone remembers Sullivan's Ledge, which was on the wall tremendously polluted. Federal funds came in and they fixed that whole thing now where it you actually, it took a lot to do, but it has been un-polluted now. So I really think we need money to fix it.
All right. Kathy Dana, you're a real estate person. The side Hicks Logan area has been, had lots of plans, as we've said, but nothing really has gotten developed that much. I think Quinn Fisheries with their small shipbuilding outfit is the first one. What, why is nothing getting done at Hicks Logan?
I hate to do this, Jack, but first, I didn't touch on traffic. I'm just gonna say thirty seconds. I would look into a way to get an off-ramp from one forty right into um.
Advanced Manufacturing Center.
Thank you. And then we don't affect Hathaway Road at all. So that I'll just leave that alone. Um, first of all, our waterfront is not developed to its full potential by any means. You go to any other town, any any waterfront community, and that's their focus. I mean, that's the beauty of New Bedford. And there have been plans. Um, I know Council of Gomes was a big advocate for, um, I think it was a a ball field he wanted to put down there, um, a place to have concerts. It was, it was like so many things that they were gonna do in that area. Uh, I don't know what happened. I don't know where the follow-through, where that falls to the wayside. I'm not sure. Um. But it does, we do need funding. We absolutely do need funding. The other thing we have to um be a little considerate of, a lot of those buildings are in such disrepair. I get that, you know, they're historic, but you have to draw a line at some point, and I I'm a big advocate for keeping our history. I wish they never put Route Eighteen in. They ripped the heart of the city right out. Um, there should be a museum in this city for that to show our we were number one in in textile. Show people what, I mean, we have the Whaling Museum, it's amazing. What about another museum to show our textile era? There's so many things that this city can do, and we just, we just don't.
All right. Have I missed anybody? I think I've gotten to everybody on the Hicks Logan area. Yep, I have, okay. So let's go to a new topic. Um, last night, the city council rejected the mayor's second nominee, second Cape Verdean nominee to be on the Voc Tech board. Uh, this was a person who was a Hall of Fame athlete at Voc Tech herself, a person who um, i- is a accomplished accountant and auditor at UMass Dartmouth, worked for New Bedford for many years. Carol Pimentel is her name. They rejected her at a five to four vote. Uh, there was much talk about whether she would support some of the state's efforts to get more Latino children into the Voc Tech so that it isn't a school where only the kids who had the best grades in eighth grade, the best uh attendance, the the fewest discipline problems uh can have access to that vocational education. I'd like people to talk about that, but I'd also like people to talk about the um, the tenure of the city council, and they seem to have be having lots of difficulties getting along with the mayor. They even elected as council president a person who hasn't spoken to the mayor in two years. So let me go to Carmen Amaral first because this uh issue uh touches on education. What about that city council rejection last night of um the Voc Tech nominee? And 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 how is the city council functioning in terms of getting along with and and working with the mayor in a positive manner?
Well, from the few things that I've heard about reasons folks gave for uh not voting for her, I think she had all the qualifications to be uh to be appointed. Uh, in terms of the city council and how it's functioning, I think that municipal governments, we have a system of checks and balances, and everyone has a responsibility of moving the city forward to meet common goals. I'm not sure what's happening as a whoever the new Ward Three city counselor is. If it's me, absolutely, we need to leverage our ability to listen to people and mediate and understand what the problems are and bring people together. Uh, I also wonder if this is a problem with our system of checks and balances and an imbalance of power because sometimes when there's an impasse, um, that's what that is. And if that's the case, we need to look at that and cor- make corrective actions so that the city can move forward.
Is it, is it a good strategy when you need a check and balance to stop talking to the executive branch? Is that? I mean, m- maybe that is a a way of bringing someone to the table, but it seems a little extreme.
I mean, you need to, you don't come to solutions without communication.
Okay, let's, who who else? Let's let's. Okay, let's who who else? Let's go to Bob Cabral. What do you think about the council's vote last night rejecting Carol Amor? On a five to four vote as a nominee of the Voc Tech School Committee?
I think it's more businesses usual in New Bedford. Now, there's a mandate that these changes be made. So they come in whether the city council wants it or not. Carol Pimental is very qualified to do the job. She should have been approved. I mean, I, the reasons I heard is that maybe she was too old. And she serves on multiple boards. Well, to me, that's very problematic. I mean, that's discriminatory almost. So and as far as the city council is getting along, they don't. They need to I mean, if I didn't like somebody, you wouldn't know it. I'm a professional. I conduct my way in such in a professional manner. So if I agree or disagree with someone, we're gonna talk about it. My big thing is we're fifty fifty. We're fifty fifty council right now. We need, we need more debate, more compromise so that we can get to those eight three votes. That a vote in which not both sides are happy is a vote that the citizens are gonna maximize the most benefit from. So he should have been, one other thing on that is, you know, my son, I'm a father of four. My son had problems. He never did that great in school. And he never, you know, he had some attendance issues. He was never in a lot of trouble, but he he was denied, you know, and thank God he went on and he learned the trade. And he did it by on the job training and and he's he's doing great. You know, a lot of people, I know a lot of tradesmen and women who didn't do so good in school. I don't know, maybe their minds think a little bit different. They're a little more engineering or something. I don't know. But most of the tradespeople that I know weren't academically, they weren't scholars. They were hardworking people that that use their minds and their hands to get things done. And we need them. You know, a good tradesperson is worth its way to go. We need some more vocational schools.
All right, let's go to Sean Oliver next, Sean. As I said, the state has ordered the Voc Tech to change its admission policies to admit more Latinos, more disabled students. The council rejected mayor's second nominee who, you know, took positions that seemed to be in line with what the state is trying to accomplish. What's your take on that and the way the council is working in general?
I, well, I think the nominee her list of qualifications exceeded or met and exceeded in some categories what we were looking for. As far as the, you know, admissions there, I I I feel like exactly what Bob's saying, where we do need some more tradesmen, you know, there there are people that are, you know, weren't so great in school. But yet here we are forcing them to be in a school type setting. Maybe they're better with their hands than than the actual learning, the hands on, the stuff that you can't really teach at a at a regular high school. They should be held to the same standards, though. Once they are there, they should have to, you know, hit certain marks to stay there. Voke has always been a, you know, a something to to look for, something to strive for, you know. And so it is a little, it's been a little tough to get in there. I I've I've been fortunate enough to have two children to go through, both my daughter and my stepdaughter have who's currently at Voke. My daughter graduated in two thousand and twenty through through Voke. Be able to attend that school where some people have not. So I definitely think that needs to be changed. As far as the cohesiveness in the city council, I think there needs to be a little bit more work as far as working together to reach a common goal. Maybe a little bit more debate about it. And there in in all things, there sometimes there needs to be compromise. When people are appointed to different positions, you know, just because of of
I'm just gonna try to move along here because we only have fifteen minutes left. And I I do have to ask people to to try to get their answers to be a little bit shorter. Let's go to Jacob Ventora next. Jacob, what do you think? Is it, was it just a check and balance, the council playing their role of check and balance with the second rejection of the mayor's nominee? And if that Voc Tech doesn't get its act together, could they be subject to a lawsuit for not admitting enough Latino kids?
Yeah, look, I think I'm not gonna comment on the individual who was up. My bigger issue is that the current city councillors are not asking enough questions, not having enough debate. The particular individual who was up and rejected last night, some of the comments I heard in the public from the councillors, I I thought were concerning in terms of specifically age. But people have their ability to vote how they want and and hopefully it gets resolved. I I think there were a few issues that I had with some of the other nominees as well. I would have asked some tougher questions. In terms of Voc Tech, I absolutely think vocational schools are great, whether it's New Bedford or Diamond Regional or even Bristol Aggie. You look at some of these schools across the Commonwealth, and even though they have particular trades and focuses, some of these students, most, many of these students are actually scoring above average in standardized testing, whether it's math or other areas. So I absolutely am an advocate for the vocational school. I have family who went there. And as far as the city council, I've not made any, I've not been shy about this. I think the city council, you know, you have personalities on that council. I know most of them personally or fairly well, but I think what's happening now is an unhealthy friction between the city council and the mayor's office. And I'm not gonna place blame on any individual. Across the country, you see city councils and mayor's offices who have a friction. I think we're now teetering on an unhealthy friction. And what I'd like to do is use my experience on Beacon Hill and bringing people together and crafting legislation, bringing people together down here. I've offered my mediation services to the city council president and the mayor. I have not heard back yet. But we'll see, we'll see if they take me up on that offer.
Okay.
Pro bono, pro bono.
Sure. Let let's go to Kathy Dana. Kathy, was this just a check and balance? Or as Dan Costa, who's written in, what is your, what is your feeling about the effectiveness of the current city council getting along? They've rejected two of the mayor's nominees in a row now. Are they right? The Voc Tech needs to be able to run its own ship?
Well, this is a great example, Jack, of where facts come into play. I was at that meeting last night. I listened to all that both sides of it. And I'm gonna start out by saying most, some of the most intelligent people I know don't test well. They they just, some people can't test. Carol Pimental is more than qualified for that position. Having said that, her idea was, she was saying that she would like to, sorry for that. That grades shouldn't be a factor in getting into Voc Tech. What the what the council was defending is there are specific guidelines and rules that require that. So I mean, this is a place where you have to go into a gray area, where I think this needs a lot more conversation. Maybe the the guidelines or requirements have to be changed, but council is going by the rules.
No, but hasn't the state told the 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 Voc Tech school to change those rules to admit more kids from low income, disabled and 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 Latino backgrounds? I think that they have.
Yes, but they still have the guidelines for the grades. Like if if a child can be very intelligent and do amazing in a trade, but does not test well enough to get into Voke, that's what has to change.
Yeah.
Has to go. And the other thing that Carol was pointing out is she'd like to see the junior highs start talking with it. She wants the kids in Voke that are gonna pursue these careers. Don't just go to Voke. Maybe because they think it's easier than academics at New Bedford High School. So you have one week of, it's just a little distracting. I got Bob Cabral on my screen.
It's okay. We we got your point.
But but I get her point that try to try to really gear Voke towards the children that want these trades. Not someone that just wants that for high school and they're not gonna get into the trade. And I don't know how how you can screen that. She was trying to say that. I think her opinion came across wrong. I think council may have not misunderstood, but I think they were going based on the guidelines and requirements. And there has to be better communication.
I'm gonna wrap you up because I I gotta get a few more questions. Ten minutes left. Bob Bromley, you haven't answered this question yet. What about the council's action last night rejecting the mayor's second Voc Tech nominee? And the state's admonition to Voc Tech to admit more disabled and Latino kids?
Two parts to this. One, being a chairman of a city board, it is very difficult to find volunteers to serve on city boards and commissions. So anytime you have somebody that's one of the volunteer, you you must respect them if they have the qualifications. And if it was a need be that, okay, the person's on too many boards or commissions, then the mayor should be working with that person to say, okay, if you go on to the on to the Voke, you have to resign off one or one or two of the others. But again, we have a dearth of people trying to get people onto the boards and commissions. As far as vocational school goes, I support vocational education one hundred percent. And it's been, it's a tremendous opportunity for students in the the state of Massachusetts. And I see it from another state that is vastly different. I too had a daughter who graduated from high school in two thousand and twenty. She graduated from New Bedford High. We tried to get her into New Bedford Voke, but she kept getting rejected. And one of the parts that I always thought that was an issue was that she needed, she had a five oh four. And I just felt that the school, like some of the the school systems that the the school teachers and administrators that I had here in the city didn't want to have to deal with her five oh four situation. So she did not
Explain to the outlets what a five oh four is, Bob?
Five oh four is like an individual education plan to assist a student if they have particular emotional or other issues. And she did, she needed that plan, and that was always a struggle in going through the entire school system. Every grade, having to reargue every single year and making sure that they follow through it. She's another one that was just said, does not test well. Smart as anything, can do everything. The minute you put a test in front of her, she would freeze up. And that was part of understanding through the five oh four what she needed. She needed individual help, you know, to unfreeze and go forward. So taking a look at how the admissions are for that, I've been a strong advocate of we need to open up the vocational school. For several years now, what I have heard is that parents are pushing pushing to kids towards Voke because they don't like what's going on in the Bedford school system. So they push them over to Voke because of the higher qualifications needed to get in there. That is totally wrong. It should be open to all students, be equitable to everybody, and making sure that we get our students trained for the future in whether whatever endeavor they wanted to go to.
Okay, John Robinson, let's go to you. The council has rejected two of the mayor's nominees to the Voc School Committee. They're under an order from the state to diversify their admissions. What do you think? You're on mute, John. You're on mute again.
I don't touch myself. Wait a minute, no, wait a minute.
I'm not sure what's going on, but I can hear you now. Go ahead, buddy. Go ahead, John. I don't know what's hap, what's happening, John. No, we can't hear you, John.
He's muted again.
You can hear me now, though, right?
Yeah.
Can you? Yeah, okay, Jack, there are two parts to the question. The first one is I, as a resident in Bedford, very quickly, I I used, my father was an administrator in Bedford High School. And we followed school committee meetings. This would happen time and time again. And people put their egos and their personalities and themselves above the common good or what they want. And they behave like little children. And the comment, appointees, people that should be appointed, don't get appointed. There was one woman, Clara Crossen. She was to be head of the industrial arts in the in the city of Bedford. And it went to a big, big thing with the city council, the school committee. It never got she never got approved. The city was worse for it. The same thing is happening now and last night. She should have been approved. But you know what it is, and Bob Bromley hit on it, people are going to Voke that really I don't shouldn't go there just because they don't wanna go to New Bedford High School. Voke has guidelines on disciplines, guidelines on rules. If you don't pull up, if you don't stay in line there, they can let you go. The public schools can't do that. So what's happened is we've had people that wanna pursue academic careers, go to Voke, and then they go on into academic colleges. That's got to be addressed. That's got to be stopped. I think we probably have to look at New Bedford High School and if there are problems there with discipline if the hot, which are keeping students out or hurting the education, that has to be taken care of. That reflects directly with Voke. The two of them go hand in hand. But the other thing, I think we saw it, we had a candidate's night, Monday night, a couple of nights ago. There were people from the the city council at the candidates' night. And you could tell very, really, they all don't get along. My whole thing is, you you get along when you're in an organization, it's professional. You automatically get along for the common good. When you leave the meeting or whenever, whatever happens then, happens then. But in the meeting, you do what you can for the common good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, this will be the last question. So I'll ask people to go as as quickly as they can. We'll start, oh, I was gonna start with Sean, but it looks like he's, Sean, are you still there? Okay.
Yes.
This will be the last question. I'll ask people to go a little quicker. And this question, I'm I'm gonna ask to everybody. I think it's a good wrap up question and it's maybe it's good for you because it comes in from Bethany Foto, who I know has endorsed you. That's not why I'm asking it. But the question is, what made you decide to run for this seat? I think it's difficult to put yourself forward. So what, what, why would you wanna do this? It's easy just to get another part time job, you know?
Well, it's it's absolutely not for the money or to to add to a resume or to get a part time job. This, this isn't a part time job. It's a full time job. But the biggest thing is, as a resident
All right, froze up. Come on, Sean, you can do it. Unfreeze. Come on. We'll go back to him. Sean?
Yes.
Yeah, you froze up there for a bit, so.
Yeah, I I can, I can still hear you and for some, it doesn't freeze on my end. But as a, as a, as a resident who has gone through a lot of the public services, whether it be with Section Eight, Pace, WIC, and being able to overcome a lot of the obstacles that a lot of our residents face to being a successful entrepreneur in some aspects, having a good job and, you know, being a property owner in the city. I've take a lot of pride in my city. Even having to navigate through those difficult times. And that's what I wanna do is I wanna help the common man, the everyman, the people that have been forgotten, and that's exactly what Ward Three is, the forgotten people. And I wanna be the voice for those people. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Very good. Let's go to Jacob Ventora. Why do you wanna, why did you decide to run for this seat and have to deal with guys like me?
I've been dealing with you for a long time, Jack. I I love this city. My family's from this city. Four generations on the Portuguese side and countless generations on the Wampanoag side. We've been here for centuries and the city has a lot to offer. It's great for young professionals like myself who wanna locate here and not necessarily pay Boston prices. Ultimately, though, it's about serving people. I've done it at State House. I've done it in various capacities, as I said, through constituent services. And I'm doing this for no money and probably a lot of headaches. But at the end of the day, it's about improving Ward Three. And whoever wins this seat is gonna be voting on issues at large as well. So it's about improving the city and the region and bringing attracting business and people here as well. And I wanna thank all the other candidates. I think Ward Three is in good hands, whoever wins this thing, so.
Very good. Okay, Kathy Dana, why, why do you wanna put yourself through this again and not just stay home and enjoy with your grandchildren?
I love this city. I absolutely believe in this city. I'm invested in this city. My entire family, immediate family is in the city, so every aspect of this that anything that goes on in the city affects my family personally. I feel I'm a strong voice. I feel I'd be a strong advocate. I have a great background in development, which the city needs desperately, desperately. Development is is I mean, we we put importance on on constituent services and I don't minimize that for a second. But in order to fix everything we need fixed, it's development. And I'm the strongest candidate for that. And I would love to be your full time councillor again.
All right, Bob Bromley, you've been known All right, Bob Bromley, you've been known for a long time with Veteran Services and other volunteer things you've done for the city. You're a historian of all things New Bedford, but why do you want to put yourself forward to, to run for the council?
I guess it's my strong civic feeling. I've been a volunteer doing many things inside the city for the past forty years, even before that when I was a teenager. Just another step up from everything that I've been doing, whether it's been working with Buttonwood Park, working with the veterans throughout the city. Creating a whole new museum inside the city that's become quite successful. It's just a continuation of my personal feelings that. You need to serve in order to make your environment better. And it's, in this particular case, it's my neighborhood. Ward Three has been my life for the last fifty five plus years. Grew up in the city. I've been a city resident for my entire life. My family's been here for many generations. You know, just going way back, coming in both initial immigrants and later immigrants coming in. The diversity of the city, the diversity of Ward Three is amazing. And I grew up in a very diverse neighborhood, which the fun thing about it was having all different types of food, all different types of culture all around you. That's what made New Bedford. And seeing what has gone on in Ward Three for the past several years has really angered me to a point. Of wanting to jump in and protecting my city, protecting my war. And getting it back on track, righting the ship and getting it sailed. Down the stream, down the bay once again. Again, this is not something I'm looking at as a resume enhancement or a career boost. I'm at the end of my career. And I just continue to feel I need to serve my area and my city.
And I know you want to get that trash cleaned up, as does John Robinson in your neck of the woods up near one ninety five. Let's go to. John Robinson. If you want to run instead of just going back and to teach them all music.
No, I wanted to say, I'm from New Bedford too. I'm, I'm many, many nationalities. I'm English, French, Jewish. My father's half Portuguese. We have relatives on the island of Faiul. I'm trying to make contact with them. I'd like to either go see them or have them come to see me there. I definitely want to go there. But I've been part of New Bedford and part of all the ethnic tradition. Why I decided to run and you hit on it, Jack. Is there's so many things in my neighborhood that just haven't been taken care of. Broken streetlights. On Wilbur Street, a bummy, there were two telephone poles. They tied one together to one that's broken. It's an accident waiting to happen. Right less than, less than, not even a tenth of a mile from me at the end of Rockdale Avenue, there's a street light that's been broken that they have not replaced. There's been three accidents going right indirectly into the house, which is perpendicular, perpendicular to that within the last six months to a year. So I mean, there's a mess all around our house, all the garbage, all on sides of the fence, hasn't been done. And yet, every year, people come to see me. Could you sign my nomination papers, Mr. Robinson? Will you vote for me, Mr. Robinson? Do you have a problem, Mr. Robinson? I explain the problems. We'll look into it, I'll look into it. I never hear from them again. The problem just continues. It snowballs and it gets worse as long with the garbage we have there. Now we've got furniture they're throwing down there. It's a mess. It's got to be cleaned up. We need better responsibility and better representation. The people will be my main concern, as I think all the other candidates. I want to thank everybody tonight. I enjoyed it. Thank you, Jack, for having us and have a good evening.
Okay, Bob Cabral, why, why would you want to put yourself, you're a better successful businessman, you work at CBS. I really apologize. I wanted to get to your homeless plan tonight and I just ran out of time. You have to read about it in one of my, my columns. But why would you want to do this at this stage of your career, run for city council?
Well, I mean, I looked at the last couple of elections of Councilor Bergo and Pereira and to me, those are a mandate for change. You know, I've always kept my ears and my eyes open to what's going on, trying to keep my pulse in the city and I've seen people upset. Hell, I've been upset. You know, there's lackluster services and the council, a council and constant turmoil. But what really got me to pull the trigger was when I came up with a homeless plan and I could not get anybody to even talk to me. I mean, a couple of people did it out of courtesy, but I mean, I put a lot of effort into that plan as an advocate. I talked to a lot of the homeless people. And, and, and there was very little response. So I said to myself, I could use my background as a manager and a military officer to make a difference in, in the city. You know, my motto is going to be doing what's right for the customer. If you do what is right for the customer, in this case, the voter, the constituent, you're never going to fail.
Well, I, I should mention that you also had worked in the substance abuse clinic, so you are very familiar with one of the main issues in New Bedford, so. I'll squeeze that in too. It's hard to get everything in one shot hour. And so our last statement will be from Carmen Amoroff. Carmen, you're obviously a successful school administrator, but a successful teacher. Come from a very interesting background, immigrant background, overcome a lot of challenges early in life with your mother passing away. Tell us about why you want to run and do this public service job.
Well, you spoke to a lot of those things. As an immigrant to the city, very young age. I was put in to the role of advocate and liaison for my immediate family, for my extended family, navigating, getting public assistance. Systems of bureaucracy with my mother's medical care. How to apply for college, how to get help with the gas bill. I've done those things. I lived that life. My career has been a life of service and advocacy. Those experiences. And my dedication to the community, my volunteerism with the Coalition to Save Our Schools. I'm the president of the board at the Women's Fund South Coast. I care deeply about issues in our community and it's time for a fresh perspective.
Wow, what great candidates. I wish we could all clap for each other because I just think you've all, you know, sometimes I cover these elections and I wonder. Is there anybody of the candidates can even do the job? I think all seven of you could do it. You've done a great job here tonight. It's not the easiest thing to do this kind of thing live, so thank you very much and good luck to you all and I'll see two of you in the final.
Awesome, guys. Thanks. Have a good night, guys.